Good evening. I'd like to call the -- call the order of the town council meeting, and I would like to present the gavel to the seating of the chairman, Pro-Tam.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Let us now pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I will now have the swearing in of the councillors elected by our town clerk, Matty Douse.
Do you, Esteban Carrasco Jr., solemnly swear to perform all duties incumbent of you as a member of the Southbridge Town Council until June 30th, 2016 faithfully and impartially according to laws of the Commonwealth and abide by the charter and by laws of the town of Southbridge, so help you God. If you would just sign your name right here, please, just right there. And I also have to give you the open meeting law on the standards of conduct, and I'll give you that package, so if you would just sign your name right there, please. Okay, so let me just get that to you. Do you, Minnie Manna, solemnly swear to perform all duties incumbent of you as a member of the Southbridge Town Council until June 30th, 2016 faithfully and impartially according to the laws of the Commonwealth and abide by the charter and by laws of the town of Southbridge, so help you God.
I do.
If you would just sign your name right there, please. Okay, and I also have to give you the open meeting law and the standards of conduct, so if you would just sign your name right there. Okay, perfect. Congratulations to you. Do you, Conrad Vandal, solemnly swear to perform all duties incumbent of you as a member of the Southbridge Town Council until June 30th, 2016 faithfully and impartially according to laws of the Commonwealth and abide by the charter and by laws of the town of Southbridge, so help you God.
Thank you. Invocation, Father Nelson, of the Blessed John Paul II Parish will now perform the invocation. Good evening.
O God, who arranges all things according to a wonderful design, graciously receive the prayers we pour out to you for our town of Southbridge, that through the wisdom of its leaders and the integrity of its citizens, harmony and justice may be assured and lasting prosperity come with peace. Help all over the members of our town council, that by electing their offices today, that they may succeed in bringing us all with honesty and love to a social development in which they could guarantee the well-being of all, especially of the needy. We ask this through Christ our Lord.
Amen.
Amen. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen.
Thank you, Father Nelson. We will now have roll call of the town councillors. Stacy, please begin.
Councillor Carrasco.
Present.
Councillor Clemens.
Present.
Councillor Landevan.
Present.
Councillor Manna.
Present.
Councillor Markucci.
Present.
Councillor Moriarty.
Present.
Councillor Nicola.
Present.
Councillor Pellicwen.
Present.
Councillor Vandal.
Present.
Nine present.
May I have a motion for the chair? Do I have a motion? Councillor Markucci?
Thank you, councillor. I would like to nominate David Landevan as permanent chair.
Second. We have a second discussion? Do we have any other nominations? We'll take a vote, and all we have to give is the last name. I don't think we even have to have a vote if he's the only --
You need a form of vote, yeah.
All right. Roll call, please.
Councillor Clemens.
Yes.
Councillor Landevan.
Yes.
Councillor Manna.
Yes.
Councillor Markucci.
Councillor Landevan.
Councillor Moriarty.
Yes.
Councillor Nicola.
Landevan.
Councillor Pellicwen.
Landevan.
Councillor Vandal.
Councillor Landevan.
Who?
Councillor Landevan.
Landevan, thank you. And Councillor Carrasco.
Councillor Landevan.
Nine for Landevan, thank you.
Now it's turned reading over to the elected council chair, Mr. Landevan.
Thank you. Agenda item number eight, election of the council vice-chair. I'm looking for nominations.
Nominate Councillor Markucci?
I'll second that.
Are there any other nominations?
I'd like to second that.
Any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Any other nominations? Seeing none, nominations closed. Stacy, could I have a roll call, please, on the vice-chair seat, please?
Councillor Landevan.
Councillor Markucci.
Councillor Manna.
Councillor Clemens.
Councillor Markucci.
Councillor Markucci.
Councillor Moriarty.
Markucci.
Councillor Nicola.
Clemens.
Councillor Pellicwen.
Councillor Markucci.
Councillor Vandal.
Councillor Markucci.
Councillor Carrasco.
Councillor Markucci.
Councillor Clemens.
Clemens.
Six Markucci, three Clemens.
Moving on, agenda item number nine, adoption of the permanent seating arrangement. I will go with Matty Douse to perform this.
Okay, if we could have all the councillors that are left without being the vice and Councillor Carrasco? Councillor Carrasco has picked number three. Councillor Clemens has picked number thirteen. Councillor Manna has picked seat number twelve. Councillor Moriarty has picked seat number four. Councillor Nicola has picked seat number five. Councillor Pellicwen has picked seat number six.
Thank you, Matty. Agenda item number ten, looking for motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, show of hands. This meeting is adjourned. We will be having him going into our meeting. Good evening. Welcome, everyone, for the July fifteenth town council meeting in the town council chambers. Please join me in the pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. Agenda item number two. Stacy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councillor Carrasco.
Present.
Councillor Clemens. Councillor Landevan.
Present.
Councillor Manna?
Present.
Councillor Markucci.
Present.
Councillor Moriarty.
Present.
Councillor Nicola.
Present.
Councillor Pellicwen.
Present.
Councillor Vandal.
Present.
Nine here.
Thank you. Agenda item number three, consider and accept the council minutes for Monday, June twenty-four, two thousand and thirteen.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
I'd like to abstain from this vote, as I was excused from that meeting.
Thank you, councillor.
Thanks.
We're going to do hand vote on this, all in favor? Any opposed?
I abstain.
Yep.
I abstain.
Thank you. Agenda item number four, subcommittee reports. Right now, we have no subcommittees formed. By the next meeting, we will have these in place, so we can move on. I do ask the public, though, if you are interested in sitting on a subcommittee as a citizen, you can go online and get the forms, or you can go to the town manager's office and fill out the forms. It will be done a little different this year. After the previous election, the citizens of Southbridge decided that they want the chairman of each subcommittee to pick their own citizen members. So I do encourage people to get out there and participate in our local government, and I appreciate that. Thank you. Agenda item number five, chairman's announcements. Just really briefly, we all know it's hot here. It's like this every time of the year, but first of all, I want to thank my fellow councillors for all the support that you've given me. I'm very humble, and I do know and understand that it takes nine of us to move this government forward. That doesn't mean we're going to be on opposite ends of the spectrum at times, but I'm looking to work with all nine of you so we can move this community together, and I know everyone sitting up here has the best intentions for the community, because that's why they ran. So I want to thank you on that, and I want to thank my family for coming out and supporting me, which this means the world to me. Families always first, and it always will be first in my life, so thank you for your support, and I promise I'm going to try to continue our Landevan tradition, which I take very serious. So I thank you. Then the last thing is, with the extreme heat that we do have this coming week, I ask any citizen members to reach out to your neighbors. There's a lot of elderly people out there, there's a lot of people that can't afford air conditions and stuff, try to reach out to them and welcome them into your house any way you can, and just check on them and be that good neighbor, because extreme heats and stuff like that, so just be kind to one another and extend the hand. I just want to wish also our new councillors, Councillor Carrasco, Councillor Manna, congratulations. I'm looking forward to working with both of yous. And Councillor Vandal, congratulations on your reelection.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I would like to extend congratulations to Councillor Markucci on her vice-chair seat. Thank you. That's all I have for announcements at this time. I will move on to agenda item number six, town manager's announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will make these brief again because of the heat. I do wish to just welcome the new members of the council, and I do look forward to working with both, and obviously, welcome back to Councillor Vandal. Just one announcement is, we are processing the changes from the election, so we are having the town attorney make those changes to the charter, so we'll get that done and get that out on the website as soon as possible. So I just want to let people know that we are processing those changes, and we'll get that in the mix as soon as possible. And that's all I have this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, town manager. Agenda item number seven, swearing in and presentation. We do not have any at this time, so we will move on to agenda item number eight, citizens' forum. Is there any citizens out there that would like to speak on something that is not on the agenda tonight? Are there any other citizens out there that would like to speak? Seeing none, we will move on to agenda item number nine, vote to reappoint Fred Warren to the historical commission for a three-year term effective July first, two thousand and thirteen, through six thirtieth, June thirtieth, two thousand and sixteen.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on this? Stacy, roll call, please.
Councillor Clemens.
Yes.
Councillor Landevan.
Yes.
Councillor Manna.
Yes.
Councillor Markucci.
Yes.
Councillor Moriarty.
Yes.
Councillor Nicola.
Yes.
Councillor Pellicwen.
Yes.
Councillor Vandal.
Yes.
Councillor Carrasco.
Yes.
Nine yes?
Thank you. Agenda item number ten, councillors' forum. I have no particular order that I'm going to go in, so I will start off with Councillor Carrasco.
Thank you. I would first would like to thank my family, and also, I would like to second thank the citizens of Southbridge. I am humbled by the opportunity you have given me to serve you first and you all the time. I do not take these next three years lightly. I vow to continue to push the town forward and its citizens forward. Again, I am reachable. The town manager's office has my contact information, and also, our town clerk, Matty, has my information. So please feel free to contact me, email me, and let's continue to move Southbridge forward. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Moriarty?
Just briefly, congratulations to newly-elected councillors Carrasco and Manna on winning seats, and also to Conrad Vandal for his reelection, as well as to councillors Landevan and Markucci on your appointments as well. Beyond that, it wouldn't be a normal council meeting for me if I didn't have something to plug for charity-type thing. So I have more or less, I haven't done this in a few years in terms of the council, but more or less, it's a challenge to the council to take part in a local upcoming charity event that is designed for pretty much anyone of all ages and abilities. Some of those who are up here have taken part in the past. Basically, what it is, is it's a Wolfball tournament Saturday, July twenty-seventh, at Henry Street Field here in town, the proceeds of which will benefit the Jimmy Fund, which I think most people are aware of, primarily fighting pediatric cancer. This is a tournament we've done, this will be the ninth year we've done it, and like I said, I know some of you have taken part in years past. What we have, teams of minimum of three, but most teams of five or six people, and it's thirty-five dollars for a team, so it's really about six or seven bucks a person if you kind of go that route, as long as you do it ahead of time. If you wait till the last minute, i.e. the evening before, the morning of, it's a fifty-dollar fee. But thirty-five dollars, I have more in case anybody out there is interested as well, and I send something out to the newspapers and such, so that'll be out there, and hopefully we can have a good number of people come out and take part. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Nicola?
Thank you. I just want to congratulate the new councillors who've been newly-elected, Councillor Carrasco, Councillor Manna, and I wish to congratulate Conrad Vandal again.
Thank you.
And to you and Councillor Markucci, congratulations as chair and vice-chair. Good luck to you. Have fun with it. I really don't have anything else tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Pellicwen?
Yes, I have a couple of quick things. I wasn't able to attend the last town council meeting, so I wasn't able to thank Councillor Regis, former Councillor Regis, for her service to the community, and I think that it's important for me to do that. People don't understand just how much of a sacrifice it is in terms of your family to spend so many evenings away from home. So, thank you, Councillor Regis. And again, congratulations to the two new councillors, Councillor Carrasco and Councillor Manna. I'm really excited for you both, congratulations. You both worked very hard on your campaigns, and the fact that you're here tonight is a testament to all of the dedication and work that you put in. So best of luck to you in your terms on the council, and our new leadership as well, Vice-Chair Markucci and Chairman Landevan. I'm looking forward to working with you this year. I do have a couple of other quick things. A lot of citizens have asked me about all of the new signage around town on the streets, and I was kind of taken aback seeing a lot of it, because I figured as a member of the DPW committee, I would have, like, had more knowledge of it coming, but various people have various questions and concerns about particular signs in particular areas, and I'm not really sure who to bridge that with, or whether it would be like the State Department of Transportation, or if I should refer people to the Traffic Commission, but there's a couple of specific intersections where people have had concerns, and I don't know where or what to tell them about it.
Mr. Chairman, you could certainly start with the Traffic Commission, and we'll make a recommendation to PPP if you have certain locations that you want to have looked at, no problem?
Right, right. I guess the top of Sales Street, there's somebody who lives near there who says that with the two stop signs, a lot of people seem like they're mistaking it for a one-way and going to the left side of the road because there's a stop sign on the left side, and then there's another sign further down Sales Street that I don't know that it's actually on the wrong side of the road, but people seem to think that it's on the wrong side of the road, such little things like that, so.
If you want to send an email with those locations, we'll definitely look into it.
Okay, great, great. And the other thing that I was concerned about, I know that lots of emotions run high in election season, and I wasn't at the last meeting, but in reading the minutes, I tried to catch this on TV, and it was, I guess it was a long meeting, and I haven't actually seen it on cable, but there was some questions about, like, personnel stuff relating to one of the town council candidates in the election, and the minutes say, "Vice-Chairwoman Clement stated she has been asked about an employee issue. She asked if there is a privacy policy for providing information on former employees of the town. Vice-Chairwoman Clement stated that it had to do with the firing of a in-town employee, and asked if the reason could be provided as public information. She cited Paul Zotos as an example. Town manager Clark explained that there are some elements that are not available for public release, and stated there is a charge for a public relations request." I'm assuming that's a public records request. Right. But it's my understanding that, and I don't want to, like, engage in any more political theater that I feel has already been done here, but I just want to make sure that, I know that personnel records are not subject to Massachusetts Public Records Law, and if it's something you want to discuss, it's subject to executive session rules, so we're not actually giving out copies of employees' personnel records if they show up asking for them, are we? I mean, because judging by the minutes, it sounded like that's--
This question was asked at the last meeting, and I did answer it, and the simple answer is, it kind of depends. Certain elements of a personnel record, any performance-related element, any salary-related elements are certainly part of the public domain. If there's an investigation in regards to something, elements of that are subject to public domain, and actually, only private information is restricted and could not be released. So it is a case-by-case basis, and usually, I have the labor attorney vet the material. So I wouldn't want to say that everything is private. I don't think that's an accurate--
I just, you know, if there's a gray area, I would really just want to make sure that the labor attorney is looking into that sort of thing, because I know that we've already changed a labor attorney to a labor attorney that is willing to go out on more of a limb for the town for reasons that I'm not completely on board with, but I just, I don't want us to get into any more dumb personnel-related lawsuits because of the rules and people not liking them. So, thanks, that's it for me tonight. I'm all set.
Thank you. Councillor Clemens?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for allowing me a moment, because it pertained to me. I would recommend, too, that if you really want to either watch the whole video or get the tape from Stacy or the recording clerk at the time, I think Stacy was, to actually hear how that question was stated, because I stated that when people are asked why someone is fired, as in the case of Mr. Jones, can we, is there, what are the privacy laws in that, because I wouldn't want to state something that I was not supposed to state, and Mr. Clark cleared that up. So the way this is worded is not exactly actually as the way it was read, so I'd suggest a full review of that tape and then listening to the question.
Well, as I mentioned, I did not take any positions on any candidates in anything to do with this election, and it was very relaxing to not have anything to do with any of it, and I just, I don't want us to not follow the rules in any way, and that is my concern in bringing that forward. So, thank you.
That's why I asked. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for allowing me to speak.
You're welcome. But while we're in council's forum, you might as well continue if you have anything.
Go from this end, okay? I know usually the cameras like to go--
Sorry.
Thank you. Actually, again, like everyone has already stated, congratulations to those who were elected and reelected. As you know, it's not, either you've watched it or you've been part of it-- As you know, it's not, either you've watched it or you've been part of it, as Mr. Council Vandal has been, and it's certainly not an easy task. I hope that you are all well-versed in all the wonderful paperwork that Matty Doust has probably bestowed upon you at this point, your packet of council rules and charters and all that wonderful stuff. And as was pointed out to me the first time that I ran, you know, Robert's Rules of Order was cited as the document to go by, so I hope you all have a chance to take a look at that, and, you know, so it doesn't get you off-kilter when somebody questions you at the podium. But, so congratulations, I look forward to working forward movement with everybody here. We've done some good positive things in the last few years, and I look forward to us continuing that momentum. So, congratulations to our new Chair and Vice Chair, and thank you. That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilor Manah?
Thank you. First, I'd like to thank my family throughout this campaign for their support and their patience. They were truly saints. I would also like to thank all those who voted, and all those who voted for me and who also came out to vote. It's very important to exercise that right. I would like to congratulate Councilor Carrasco and Councilor Vandal on his reelection, and I'd also like to congratulate Chairman Landjevan and Vice Chairwoman Markucci on their new positions. I would also like to make it known that I did resign from the PPP Subcommittee as a citizen member. That went into effect July 12th, 2013, so there wouldn't be any type of conflict because we all know that the citizens' terms end July 31st. So I did present that to the town clerk, and it is on record. I also have one concern about some of the graffiti that has been spiking up here in Southbridge lately, on Main Street, down in Globe Village, and from what I've been reading on, in the Hamilton Street area. There's been some concern not only by me, but some other people here in town. A reporter from the Stonebridge Press actually wrote an opinion page on it, and there's actually, on the Southbridge Observer, Brent Abrahamson's blog, he wrote upon the graffiti or tag-in, as people call it, that the spike, the increase here in the town of Southbridge. One thing that was mentioned was a particular bylaw specifically directed towards graffiti, and I know we don't have that in Southbridge. I did inquire about that, and I was told that we have all these wonderful general laws the state of Massachusetts, and I made copies for everyone that covers graffiti. And there's also a few other areas that it goes upon. It's in Chapter 266 in the Mass General Laws under Crimes Against Property, Sections 126 through 127A, and there are penalties against just defacement of natural scenery, against real or personal property, tag-in, which is the graffiti that we've been seeing the spike of here in Southbridge, and also malicious destruction of personal property. I do know that in our bylaws in Section 7400, we do have something that covers public property buildings, water bodies, but there's nothing for private property. I was told that these state laws are very enforceable, and if caught, the penalty could be up to two years in jail, nothing less than a $1,500 fine, or three times as much as the property damage. So say if somebody's property damage was $400, and the fine would be $1,200. And I also did speak to the Chief of Police regarding the spike of the graffiti, because it's a great concern to me, and they are working on this, I was told, I was reassured, and, you know, they do have some surveillance tapes and whatnot. But my question to, through you, Mr. Chair, to the town manager, would it be a disservice to the town if we did look into direct in a bylaw that specifies specifically graffiti, or I believe these state laws? If you could talk on that for us, just a little?
Yes, I appreciate the opportunity. I have been silent on this previous because I don't want to give credit to people that are doing things that they should not be doing, so I have not addressed this previously. It doesn't mean we haven't been doing anything. I am not a graffiti fan in any way, shape, or manner. The police department has been requested most vehemently to see what we can find and to track down the people that have perpetrated this. What I would ask for the public's help in this, if you do have information on people that have done it, if you would report it to the police department and assist us in capturing the folks that have done it. In my time with the town, we did have vandalism occur at our cemetery. The police department did track down those vandals. The amount of work that, or the amount of damage that was done was $200,000, and when a vandal does that kind of work, you're not going to collect any money from them. So the town employees and a few of our headstone companies in town did do some work to renovate that, so we found a way to repair the damage. So I'm not optimistic if we catch the person that we will be able to remediate any money. But I would ask, in pursuant to the state law, if people have had their buildings, private buildings, the town cannot go onto private property and clean it up, I would ask that you make an effort to clean it up, keep tabs on the cost to do so, and then submit that information to the police department. So if we do capture the person, that we will file all charges that we can under state law to punish these folks for doing it, because it really is a disservice to the entire community of Southbridge. We have already reached out to the utility companies. Several of the utility boxes in the community also have graffiti on it. We've already put in a request to them to come in and paint over the graffiti. To my knowledge, I don't think any town buildings have been struck yet. I know my DPW has kind of a standing order that if they see it, they're to paint it. So we do try to keep up with items that are on our property, but we are actively looking, and if we find something, I'm happy to report if we are able to capture the person or persons that are on doing this work. But that's how the town has approached that issue to this date.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Councilor Vandal?
I'd like to thank, I'd like to thank the people of Southbridge that voted for me in order that I could keep my seat. I love this job, and I'm really happy that I got the votes that I got so that I could maintain my seat. I think that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Markucci?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Not to sound redundant, but I would also like to congratulate the newest councilors, Councilor Manah, Councilor Carrasco, and re-elected Councilor Vandal. And I would also like to thank Councilor Nicola and Councilor Clemens for their years of service as Chair and Vice Chair. You have put us in a direction that I hope will continue to stay positive. Thank you.
Thank you. Agenda Item Number 11, discussion of the next meeting date, Monday, July 29th, 2013, 7:00 p.m. Right now, it's scheduled for the council chambers. Does this body still want to continue having it here, or do you prefer to, any suggestions on moving it down to the library? Councilor Nicola?
Thank you, Councilor. Prior to the beginning of this fiscal year, I was approached by Mr. Montigny, who said that if we chose to use the library, they're ready for us. So it's your call personally. Any more days like this, I'll melt right into the desk, so I'd appreciate it if we moved to someplace with air conditioning. I'm old. Help me out here. Thanks.
Any other discussion on this? So we will set it as in the Piafie Room, July 29th, Monday, at 7:00. Have a motion? Second?
Second.
All in favor? And? Thank you. There was one other thing I did forget, starting this coming Thursday on packets, if people want to continue picking up their packets, that's fine. I talked to the town manager, and I did talk to the secretary, and we are going to leave it as if this council still wants to pick up their packets between 5:00 and 6:00, no earlier than 5:00, they can do so. After 6:00, they will be delivered to your door. So you have still the option of picking it up or having it delivered to you. So I just wanted to let everyone know that. Yes, Councilor Manah?
Thank you. Chairman Landjevan, I'm sorry, there was one other thing I forgot to mention. The concerts on the Common have started.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Clemens?
Let me have a chance to speak again. One of the reasons that the council for picking up packets was so that we weren't wasting valuable money and time from a police officer dropping these off, and that they could be just left at your doorstep or somewhere, or multiple trips back if they wanted to make sure that they got into the right hands. Because as you know, when you go to pick up or even ask somebody else to pick up, if you haven't let Yvonne know, or if you don't have permission at the police station, they won't give them out. So, again, we're back to the same, having the police waste taxpayers' money and their time when they should be out doing important things, and I think that's a responsibility of us councilors to make sure we get our packet. And technically, the packets are here until Yvonne leaves. Generally, she was dropping them off. Now, if somebody else needs to drop them off, or somebody, one pickup from one police officer at one stop at the town hall. I also know that Councilor, I mean, excuse me, that Yvonne was very instrumental in making sure that Councilor Vandal got his packet, and sometimes others helped with that too, which was a testament to her dedication and to those who helped to make sure, because Mr. Vandal, Councilor Vandal, excuse me, has a little more difficulty in getting their packet. But I see eight able-bodied people up on this council who should take the responsibility to pick up their packet and not waste taxpayers' money. And if that's a prob, I will still continue to pick up my packet, because I think that's a waste of taxpayers' money and valuable time on our police department for us not to do that. So that's just my opinion. There are many of us, and you are the chair. But that was thought long and hard before that decision to change it was made, and unless there's some reason in the town office, which I respect greatly, if there's a problem with the way we've been doing it, I don't see the need for change. So, that's...
Councilor Clemens, I appreciate your opinion and input on this, but for many, many years, the packets were delivered on the door. I really don't think it's a waste of police department's time. It's called community policing. God forbid if there's an emergency. I'm sure every council up here has no reason or concern if they stop what they're doing and take care of an emergency situation. But the bottom line is, these people are going around, they're driving around in neighborhoods, and I feel that they can deliver our packets, and if you chose to pick up your packet, I just said that we're giving everyone an option, so it's, I mean, it's a win for everyone. If people choose to get their packets, it's fine. If people choose to have it dropped off, I don't see it as a waste of tax dollars on that, but I appreciate it. Councilor Pellicwen?
I had only served this past year when it was our responsibility to go and get our packets from either the town manager's office or the police station, and I have to say, I do agree with Councilor Clemens. I feel like the police officers have so many more important things that they could be doing than driving to everybody's house to bring their packet. And I know that I personally have a very erratic schedule. I'm often all over the place, and I'm not really generally home at a specific time every week, and if it has to be delivered to the counselor at their door, opposed to, you know, another person who happens to be in the house, then I'm never going to get my packet unless I go track it down at the police station. And I don't know if that's an option that I could work out with the police department, if I can just keep planning on showing up at the police department, if I can't make it to the office before it closes, but I foresee that for my own extremely busy schedule, like trying to get in touch with a police officer in front of my house every week is going to be a lot to do with. So I don't know if there's, we can work out any flexibility to accommodate our schedules at all.
Councilor Nicola?
Thank you. I'll be brief. This came about as a result of a suggestion by, actually it was Yvonne Tortis who suggested it to me, and I jumped on it. And the reason I jumped on it was not even, believe it or not, because of the time it takes away from the cops doing their jobs, but for another reason. On more than one occasion, my packet was leaning up against the door. That's a no-no. My packet is to be handed to me. If a cop is going to deliver my packet, he puts it in my hand. There are times when there's confidential stuff in these packets. It was leaning up against my front door on more than one occasion. Anybody could have walked up the walk and taken my packet, because it appears that most people know where I live. That is my concern, that if there's nobody home, they're going to leave it, and they do leave the packet, and that's not a good idea. It's never been a good idea. And I, you know, I mean, you do whatever you want as the chair, but I'm going to continue to pick mine up in the office, and I'm going to suggest to Yvonne that she go a little bit longer than 6:00 o'clock before she starts delivering them, because I'm going to pick mine up at the office. I'm just concerned about that. Packets should not just be left. A family member, the gardener, whatever, shouldn't be handed the packet, and I don't blame the police. They have a more important job to be doing than delivering our packets, but I don't want that. I don't want my packet just left for me to pick up when I get home, on the stoop or on my back porch, or as I said, on my front. That was happening, and it happened more than once, and that's not, that's not the way it's supposed to be. Thank you.
Councilor Carrasco?
If I understand what was said correctly, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's still the option of the council. I don't think it's set in stone that the police department will be delivering all nine packets. It will be for those that cannot make it and can't get it. So therefore, I will be picking up my packet, but I don't think, I think we're misunderstanding what has been said, because I believe that it is still the discretion of the council whether they're going to be picking up their packet or not. Is that correct?
That is correct. They have the option. Thank you. Councilor Manah?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I am going to have to agree with Councilor Clemens on this. I don't believe the police officers should be delivering our packets. We should utilize our time wisely. We are able to pick up our packets, and if we're not able to pick them up in that period of time, they're brought to the police station, and then we go to the police department and pick them up. I would not want my packet being left at home, my two young children, they just put me anywhere. There may be confidential papers in there that my husband's not even allowed to see. So I will be picking up my packet. Can I ask, can we take a vote on this, or would that be possible, to take a vote on this?
It's really under the chair's preview. I'm giving you guys options, whether you pick them up or you have them delivered, so, I mean, I just want to, I want to get it out to you. That was my point. Everyone has an option. You can pick it up, and if you don't get to it because of some reason, it's just going to be delivered. So I don't see why there's a vote. You have an option.
Well, I do believe it is a waste of the taxpayers' money to have the police officers deliver our packets that we're capable of, but we just can't make it down. We can make it down Friday, we can make it down to the police station, we can make it there one day later. I mean, we can make it there, though. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Pellicwen?
And I do apologize for harping on this. My schedule is really crazy. I have a three and a four-year-old. One of my kids is still potty training, and I try really hard every week to come within the window that Yvonne has them on their desk, and I try very hard to do that because I don't want to create any more work from anybody. And I would feel really bad that, you know, other people who work for the organization and do really important stuff have to do more work because I was having a difficult afternoon with my kids that afternoon, you know, and it feels like this shouldn't have to be somebody else's problem, you know? But if it is the discretion of the chair, then it's the discretion of the chair, and the chair's decisions are final, so.
Thank you. Certainly, Councilor Clemens?
I just want to be clear, I understand. Currently, if we don't pick up our packet, for those who don't understand, if we don't pick it up, and we don't make a phone call and say, "Please save it till tomorrow, I can't get there tonight," which has happened to me, or "I'm out of town" or something, then it automatically goes to the police station. At that point, it stays there until we retrieve it. If we don't choose to retrieve it, for some reason, it just stays there and it gets returned hereby the following Monday, or, yeah, the next week. If we don't retrieve it eventually, it comes to us before a meeting. But if what you're suggesting is that we have the option, what concerns me then, you're saying we have the option every week, and that in itself causes more work for the office to worry about who needs to, did the police deliver it? How many attempts did they make? So right now, with... So right now, there's a policy in place, because it was a little bit off. Some people picked it up, they forgot to pick it up, they didn't call, they didn't, so there's a policy. You don't pick it up, you know where it is. Unless you have said, keep it in the office, it goes to the station, we know where it is. I could come home from a business trip on a Saturday and know my packet is at the police station waiting for me, or Sunday, or Monday morning if need be. But if what we're saying is true, and the police are going to deliver it, and no one's going to be home to get it, I don't know where my packet is going to be at any given time. But right now, the policy is that we know where it is. And if we are going to make more work on the town manager's office by calling every week and saying, as Counsel Pellican mentioned, I had a, you know, I can't quite get to it, can you do it today, but next week I'm good, that, I think that gives a variable that becomes a problem for the manager's office to manage. But that's my opinion, and I would ask the town manager perhaps to weigh in on your staff's perhaps feeling on this, if you know, if possible? Because right now, we have a good, well, we have a working policy, so I don't know.
Yeah, in terms of that, in many, many towns that I've worked in, and certainly the practice here was always to deliver them, and the council's will was to change to the current system that we have. So from my standpoint, this is a council decision, and we'll be respectful of whatever the council decides to do in terms of that.
Counsel Moriarty.
I really wasn't initially planning to join in on the discussion, because I just didn't expect it to be a big discussion. Personally, I think this is a bit of a lot to do about nothing. I understand the concern as far as taking away from resources from the local police department. Again, I don't think anyone's expecting that an officer is going to, even if they're pulling up to one of our driveways and they get a call, I don't think, you know, I'm not expecting them to forego that phone call, that they have to go and take and respond to a scene. I don't see a problem with having officers break out and come out to the areas. You know, it's, we have, I think we have a very good police department, a lot of really good police officers. However, you know, this is no more a problem or use or lack of use of their resources than an officer sitting down by the AO, just kind of watching traffic. This is really no different to me. That said, similar to what Counsel Carrasco and others have stated, it's really kind of each councillor's own prerogative, as previously stated. I don't think it has to necessarily be a week-by-week issue for, in general, if there are certain extenuating circumstances, similar to what Counsel Pellican was illustrating, that's one thing, but in general, I think for the most part, it's, we know where it is to start. If you can't make it for any given reason past that timeline, you'll know it's either one of two places. It's either being delivered to you or perhaps just being left at the police station. I think that, similar to Counsel Nicola's and others' concern as far as it being left on a doorstep or such, I think that's a valid point, valid concern, and I don't see any reason why, if the officers are going out and taking a look, that they can't just kind of, if it's not the right person there, just bring it back to the station if they need be, and then it's kind of, it's very similar to what it is currently. You know, we have these guys going around and looking at people's trash bags to make sure they're clear or covered, so they can do that too. Thank you.
Basically, what I said as chair, I'm giving everyone their options. I know for one, I'm going to be in the town hall on Thursday night picking up my packet. I'm just giving everyone a secondary option. So I would like to try it and see what happens, and if we have to go back to the table on this, we can readdress it, but I want everyone to be open-minded, given an opportunity. I'm just giving you choices, that's all. Thank you. Agenda item number 12, looking for a motion for adjournment.
Second.
All in favor? This meeting adjourned, thank you. Have a good night, everybody.